And trustee Smith Folds, you can start us whenever you're ready.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you so much for joining the academic subcommittee on March 22, 2021. We're going to go over our opening procedures. Dr. Ray, or Dr. Raylio, Mr. Raylio, will you please do roll call?
I'll take the doctor. That's great. Trustee Smith Folds?
Present.
Trustee Gonzalez Hoi?
Present.
All right, all here and accounted for.
All right, and then we are going to trustee Gonzalez Hoi, if you would please do the land acknowledgement.
Thank you Chair Smith Folds. Let me pull it up real quick. So, we recognize that we are presently on the lands of the Chichenia Muwakma Karken Aloney peoples and acknowledge them as the first inhabitants of the land we currently occupy. Thank you very much, and I apologize in advance for the background noise. My neighbor is cutting his lawn. As soon as, he started as soon as I was heading into this meeting, so I apologize if you hear it.
No worries. And then we are going to the approval of the agenda. Are there any items that need to be changed on the agenda, trustee Gonzalez Hoi?
I don't see any changes, trustee Smith Folds.
Okay, if you'll make a motion, I'll second.
Perfect. I'd like to make a motion to move the agenda, sis.
A second, and then I think we're both in favor, so it passes. Okay. And then approval of the minutes on March 8. Again, I want to thank Ms. Ribbon Bark. Ms. Sherry, thank you so much for doing the minutes. They were great. Trustee Gonzalez Hoi, any changes to the minutes?
I didn't have any changes.
Okay, I didn't either. So if you make a motion, I'll second.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes from our March 8 meeting.
Perfect. I will second that, and it looks like we are both in a standing in alignment and agreement with that, so those pass. Mr. Raylio, do we have any public comment for items that are not on the agenda? Oh, you know what? Whoopsie doo. I forgot to go over this participating in the board committee. Okay, so let me do that. This meeting will provide, is that okay? Okay, participating in the board committee meetings. This meeting will provide public comment opportunities through the Zoom app or by telephone to indicate your desire to speak on the agenda item. Raise your hand by clicking on the appropriate icon in the Zoom app or by pressing star nine if accessing the meeting by phone. In order to be recognized to speak, you must be logged in with your first and last name, and your hand must be raised before a public comment begins for the item. Due to the Brown Act, board members cannot discuss items that are not on the agenda and do not usually respond to items presented in public comment. All right, now we're ready. Do we have any public comment for items not on the agenda?
Sorry, dragging my feet here, looking to see. No hands are raised, so we can move on to the next item.
Okay, and then we are at discussion items, discussion items. We will also make sure that public comment is, public comment opportunities provided after each one of these discussion items. The first one is SPSA, Single Plan for Student Achievement.
So I see that Lynn Potter has joined us. Hey Lynn, glad you're, this is Director of State and Federal, and we're hoping Lynn that you can share with us just one of the summary pages that your office has developed. I can probably pull it up. Now I see that you're driving, so let me pull it up and share. I will share, but maybe you could speak to what went into the development of those two-page summaries. So I will pull one up on my screen.
Thank you for joining us, Ms. Potter. We appreciate it.
To be here, I hope you can hear me okay because I am driving through San Jose or something. I know somewhere.
We can hear you. Thank you.
I apologize for my car ride.
So Lynn, I do have us, I'm showing on the screen, I'm using the Bayview, which is the first one in our folders, the example of the two-page quick guide.
So, we wanted to give folks an easy way to look at the plan because they are fairly text-heavy. So what we did was we pulled, I'm sorry. So we pulled stuff out of the school plan, and the plan is developed around three goals that align to the LCAP. So there's goal one, achieving students, and this year the goal one achieving students is divided into three sections. It's got the all students, it has our African-American black students, and it has our English learners. So in each section of the school plan, it has the overarching goals, which we unfortunately don't have dated for this year, which are the SBAK data. We left the whole SBAK data in there.
Sorry Lynn, you're cutting in and out.
Before we stop having that. And then each school develops a AMO's they use during the year that help. Okay, for Ruben, can you explain it? Can you explain it?
Yeah, I'm gonna, Lynn, I'm gonna go, thank you. I know, I thank you, and I'm gonna just mute you right now. I'll go ahead and give an explanation. I think it'll get us moving through it. Just your internet's cutting in and out. So I think what Ms. Potter was saying was specifically that the S, the site plans build off of the LCAP goals, which we have goal one, which is an achievement, goal two, and goal three. And then within goal one, as you can see on the screen, we have, it's broken down into all students for academics, African-American as a student group, because we know that it's a targeted group for the district and for all our schools, and English learners as a targeted group. So goals are built out for each of those three targeted groups, and they have related action items and services attached to those in the goals. The site plans themselves, the documents tend to be 50 to 80 pages long. So this is a two-page version that just pulls the most pertinent information. The second page of this guide shows goal two and goal three. Goal two is connected to thriving employees, so what you tend to see in that bucket in the site plans, a lot of things related to professional development and really developing our workforce and our staff to really provide a better experience for our students. Goal three is caring schools, and that's really focused on the socio-emotional learning. It's focused on attendance, it's focused on suspensions and discipline data, and that's what you would see in that third goal or third bucket. So there's actions and services that are tied to those goals, really trying to improve on those elements for each school. They included the acronyms, because we throw a lot of this alphabet, you know, the SPSAs and AMOs. I think an important one to note when you do review a site plan, when you go into the real document, the AMO, which is the annual measurable objective or outcome, that is, the school side is determining that measure. We at the district level, we have these mandated sort of state mandated data points, like the SBAK, like attendance and graduation rates. We also ask the sites to select local measures that they will utilize to see progress during the year, because those other measures, like the SBAK, those are once a year, and we're gonna actually talk about that later with the second item on the agenda today around assessment. But those items only happen once a year, and they're not necessarily timely as far as in the real time making decisions about programs and schools, so.
Mr. Rink, excuse me for interrupting. Will you push your little magnifying glass and make it a smidge bigger?
Sure. Better?
That's better. Thank you.
Right, so, and then the last piece of this summary does include the budgets, and last this current year, ESAR is the federal dollars that was sent to the districts. Title one is also federal dollars. The Bayview, this school that we're looking at, has CSI dollars, which is Comprehensive Supported Improvement. Not all schools have CSI dollars. Those are schools that were identified under Comprehensive School Improvement based on the California Dashboard. Actually, it's now two years old because the dashboard data hasn't been updated, which means our schools that were in CSI remain in CSI. They can actually exit, or new schools can't go in, sort of stuck and frozen because of the data and COVID and everything else that's happening. So I'm gonna stop sharing my screen. And I know that we wanted to have a brief discussion, or did we want to do question? I think you might want to do questions first, if there are specific questions. I know that the two trustees spent the weekend reading 50 some odd plans, so.
So I think trustee Gonzalez Hoi, what do you think about we just keeping it the same-o, same-o? We do questions, then we do public comment, then we do discussion, and then we're good to go? Okay, so.
Sounds great.
Perfect. Do you have any questions?
I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Wonderful. Neither do I. So then we'll go to, we'll go to, do we have any public comment?
So, let's see. So this would be a time for folks to raise their hands if they want to make a comment around the single plans for, our school plans for student achievement. I am not seeing any hands up.
I am not either. So let's dive into discussion. Before we dive into discussion, let's just give everybody a little bit of, we'll give everybody a little bit of background. So we decided as a team to take the SPSAs and divide them up. So when we did that, we took, we had elementary school, middle school, and high school. And one of the good things is that we all can kind of move around in that echelon. So because I have, because this is my full-time job, I decided to take the elementary schools. There's a lot of them. Trustee Gonzalez Hoi took the high schools, and Mr. Raylio took, he basically took all the schools, but he did the middle schools in this too. He took the middle schools. And so we decided to use one rubric so we can all kind of place, so it can at least be kind of standardized how we're looking at this, these SPSAs. And we then divided them up, and then we went off into our spaces, and we did that. And we are now coming back to talk about, what did we see? What trends did we see? What do we need to talk about? What do we need to kind of standardize and be like, hey, this needs to do a little bit better? We need to do a little more training around this, a little bit more work around it. So that's kind of where we are. And then I think each person can kind of take and talk about their area and what they saw, and then we can then come back together and say, okay, what's our next steps? And this is what we're doing before we take these recommendations to the board. So this is our deep dive into, and I do want to take a minute to thank Ms. Potter and her team. Those summaries were absolutely great. The rubric that we had was great. So there, it was a, it was a much easier task than expected, because when you look at 60 pages, it's overwhelming. And then, and then you kind of catch your stride when you're looking at the summary first, and then you kind of deep dive into it, and then you use the matrix. So I really, really appreciate that. And it's great for parents to be able to have a quick shot at their school and look at comparables also. Trustee Gonzalez Hoi, if you want to start us off, we can go backwards. We can go high school, middle school, then elementary school.
Sure, thank you Chair Smith Folds. That was a great summary. I just want to start by also thanking Ms. Potter and her team. I thought she did such an amazing quick turnaround on those and putting all this together for us to make it easier for our work. I love the summaries. I just want to say that. The only thing that I would recommend for next year, definitely not to change them now. You shouldn't spend more time on these. I would add maybe the theory of action. If parents look at it, and that's the only thing that they look at, maybe just like the, it's what is it called? A school-wide program idea, like just a tiny box or the theory of action. I think that would, that would make it all just complete. But thank you for putting all that together, the budgets, like that, that was perfect. So thank you, Ms. Potter. Really appreciate it. And like trustee Smith Folds said, and Mr. Raylio, we spent this weekend reading all these plans. And I was starting to see cross-eyed by the last plan I read, and I still haven't finished all of them, but I will finish them by the board meeting. And I was impressed in many different areas, and in other areas, I definitely saw room for growth. And we said we're gonna touch on specific schools, so I will generalize some of the trends that I saw. I would say that goal one specifically is the area of growth for some of the schools that I saw. Specifically, the, not the need, I saw so much thought go into looking at their data, like so much thought about looking at our English language learners and African-American students specifically. But I did have some challenges when it came to how to, how to go the next step. How are we going to close the gap to some extent? And it's, I think this year specifically hard, because in every single plan I read, they were like, because of COVID, we had to completely change the way that we always do things. So let me just state that. But I did, I did see, like, I think that just, one exemplary, like, school, like I do want to mention, because I thought they did such an amazing job, and all these goals was the answer. Like, I was just impressed and blown away by how they wrote it. I would say that like for the rest, I would just want to see a little more connection between the needs and how they're going to improve. I don't know if it's because of the actual SPSA and how it's made, that like you literally can only write like three bullet points, which is like, how are you going to improve supports for all your English language learners if you have 300 of them, right? 500 of them, and you have three bullet points? So hard to write your vision for that. But that's where I would say there's room for growth. I would say that for goal two and goal three, all of them that I saw were really well-done and well-written. I think that all of them have a really good theory of action, and they all tie it to their budget, which I was really curious to see if they are tying their theory of action to their priorities and budgeting. I was impressed on that area. And, sorry, I'm just looking at my notes. Oh, the, and the last thing I would say is that one trend that I did see was that piece about what's gonna, what's gonna take to take them the next step. They all mentioned the cuts and how much the cuts hurt them, which was really hard for me to see, because it wasn't really about how can we take it the next step. It was like, just how can we go back to the work that we were already doing, right? Grad tutors, counselors, like, it was really hard for me to re-end their plans, that like, they had less FTEs to support African-American students with counseling, right? Or, or English language learners because of the grad tutors piece. So that was just hard to, hard to read, and I did see the trend, and I think almost, I think all of them had, like, the cuts affected us this way. And if we could just get while we were cut, at least we would do okay. So it wasn't really them asking, like, we would like a million more dollars. It was really just, we would like half an FTE of counselor, right? Or half an FTE for this. So that's something I think for us to touch in the larger picture with the rest of the board and Dr. Ward, but I would say those are my major themes. But I did enjoy reading all these pages. As hard as it was on the weekend, on our only day off, to, to, to read hundreds of pages, I really enjoyed it. I learned so much, especially being an elementary teacher and reading secondary SPSAs. I'm really glad I did that, because I'd learned quite a bit. So thank you Chair Smith Folds. That was, that was, that's it for me.
Thank you so much. I think that's awesome. I'm, I'm gonna kind of jump in and say that I did enjoy reading the elementary ones as, as a secondary teacher, and then kind of like being in the middle school for so long and away from elementary for so long. I was like, oh, I'll go back to elementary school. Like, these are just awesome. Okay, so we're gonna go to Mr. Raylio who had middle school.
And I'm gonna apologize for my dog that's going crazy in the background, so hopefully my dog won't bark so much. Obviously, I wear a different hat, right, holding all SPSAs for the district. But taking the dive, focusing on the middle schools and sort of really reading basically every word on the page, which as you both know, that's a lot of words to read. The trends, I definitely have even recommendations. I'll talk about that later if we talk recommendations, but trends. I wanted to see more emphasis. I saw some, some good things. I think I echo what trustee Gonzalez Hoi said about goal two and three. I think the challenge, and it's been named with goal one, is there's a lack of data, and we know there's a lack of data based on where we're at. With that said, I did see a couple of schools that didn't let that interfere with their goal setting and their planning. So you pointed out an example of one. I'll point out Helms. In Helms' plan, they caught, they're calling out, they didn't wait for us, the district, to give them the data. Their naming assessments there chose as a site to do as their local measure. So they're gonna do performance tasks, and they're gonna use that, even though there isn't data from the previous year to compare it to. They're creating their baseline data, so they can do it next year. They're not necessarily waiting for the district to say, here's the assessment y'all have to give. So kudos to them. That's great work. That's thinking outside the box. That's, that's keeping that connection to the plan and the theory of action alive. To say that, that wasn't across the board, right? That we have varying degrees of site plans, some that felt very just compliance-driven. I don't like the way that that sounds, but this is a compliance document. This is a connection to how you spend your dollars. What I've heard in every parent group meeting I've sat in, from the ASAT to the MDAC, it just show us how you're gonna spend them dollars and what you're gonna get out of those dollars, right? And we don't always articulate that in these plans. When you put in a tiny box, teacher collaboration, I'll use that as an example, teacher collaboration. Well, to what extent? What, what are we gonna get out of that teacher collaboration? What is it gonna be utilized for? Is there a focus to that collaboration? So I definitely want us to get to a point where these plans have a little more meat to them in general. So that, that's where I'm at with this. I, they felt compliance-driven this year. And that's just, you know, being very honest and open about it, and that's how it felt. And it could be a sign of the times with COVID and everything else, and we know that. But I'd like to get us to a point where they are a living, breathing document that sites and stakeholder groups really invest in and can see how the connections are made between an action item, the data, the dollars, the theory of action, how it all connects, and that's really gonna be key. I think as we move forward and as we enter the next cycle, right, we're entering that next cycle now of developing next year's plans. So I know the timeline was totally out of whack. And in general, it's felt to me like the timelines have been out of whack, even going back a couple of years. So that's something I hope we can make some recommendations and look at how, how to improve on that as a whole. But they are what they are for this year, and I know that we have to do better. So those are my comments.
Thank you so much. On our agenda, do we have the SPSAs attached to it? Can we put that link on the agenda or somewhere? You know what I mean, where people can just click and they'll get all the SPSAs that we got?
They are, they're definitely, yeah, because they're on the website. So we should be able to link the folder or the location on the website that holds all the SPSAs?
To this agenda. Okay, that would be great. But just those of you who are listening, it is on the academic subcommittee website. So if you go to our website, WCCUSD, go type in committees, go font, once you type in committees in the quick search, you'll see academic committees, and then there's a link right there. But we're gonna try to get that on the agenda. So I had, and thank you, Mr. Raylio and trustee Gonzalez Hoi, I had elementary schools. It was nostalgic to go back and look, because again, I have a 10th grader, and I have a 10th grader, and I have a 7th grader and a homeschool 2nd grader. So it was, it was nice to go back and look at elementary schools. The problem with looking at elementary schools is you see the desperate need to have more money in elementary schools. You see the desperate need to make sure that this is that foundational period in students' lives. And if we get this right, then we set them up for success in middle school and high school. So when looking through these SPSAs, there was a part of me that was just like, oh my goodness, you have schools that have $200,000, and you have schools that have $27,000. Same district, but some schools have, you know, and you have schools that have 500 kids, the schools that have 300 kids in elementary schools. And it was looking at, I really took a look at the number of socially disadvantaged students that some schools have, and the numbers of EL students that some schools have, the number of, when you break down the demographics that these schools have, it is a challenge. Each school has their own unique challenge. And when I went into their SPSA, you know that part that says, and I don't, I'm not gonna phrase it correctly as a title. Basically, in SPSA, it says, where we need the most help? You know that little paragraph, just like, we need the most help here, like, this is what we need? I really focused in on that, and every school had something different. So I was trying to find a trend. Where's a trend in elementary school that every school can say, this is what we need? Besides monetary resources, there was no trend in that we had, everyone had a very specific need that they needed or that they were recognizing as a need. So I am a school teacher, so I went and I gave people As, Bs, Cs, and I had a couple of Ds. So I had a couple of Ds. I was like, hmm, we need some work. But it also was very much like, you know, when you grade the science fair, when you come into the science fair and you have your rubric, and you can tell, oh, your mama helped you with that, because it's got a border around it, and it's fancy, and like everything's highlighted, and there's a folder and an attachment. Well, that's what these SPSAs look like. Some of them look like, oh, your whole SSC was involved in this. Like, you really, like, there was graphs, and there was like little models, and when they theories of action, and I was like, you know, one theory of action was like three or four paragraphs, and somebody else had like one sentence. I was like, oh, somebody just filled it out before it was due. You know, like, somebody was just in the hallway before class, like, oh, I gotta fill this out. So I think we need to standardize that a little bit, because it is a big, it's a big document, but it's an important document. And I think that once our sites realize that this is something that's going to be presented, this is something that's going to be seen, and I would like them to come and present them to us. This is your, you're bragging on your school. You're telling us what you need. You're telling us specifically what we can do for you. So come and talk to us about it. I do have a couple of As. I just want to throw out there. In their presentation, Collins was an A, little borders, and you know, they had all, that was, you know, it's aesthetically pleasing. Like, it was an A. It really dug down deep in what were the needs are, and it was very clear. And a lot of it's just about being clear. When you start reading the same ones and they're using the same language, it's not very clear to your school. Collins was very personal, our school, our needs, our community, what we need to make our students the best version of themselves. It was very, it made me want to dive deep and be like, oh, let me take a look at what Collins is doing, you know, because they made it very much about their Collins students. Coronado was another one. Coronado was another one that was very much like, here's our, here's our annual review, here's what we're doing, here's what we need to do, here's what we need to keep going with. So I thought those two were good. I like the fact that some schools really were vulnerable. We need more teachers with experience. Some schools were vulnerable. We can't get a PTA started. We need help, because we don't know how to get our parents invested. And again, this is elementary school. So we want to make sure that we can help them on this level, because then it just moves and moves and moves, and we can get that investment. So those are some of the trends I saw. Some of the things that were red flags for me is when they set a goal, but they didn't attach any resources to it. Like, they set a goal. Here's our goal is to increase African-American student achievement by 10%. But when I looked down into the plan, there was no money attached to that. Well, how are you gonna do it? You can't just do it through prayer and Jesus. You gotta put some money to it. You gotta say, we're gonna buy books, or we're gonna do after-school programs, or we're gonna do so. I was looking for the money. When the money wasn't attached, it always, I had to go back and be like, well, wait a minute. How is your goal gonna be attainable if you don't put any resources to it? So that was a kind of a trend that I would like to make sure that we call their attention. I want to see all of the money used up. Show me where you use the money. Like, this is one of those things that if you have $27,000, use $27,000. You know, and ask for $28,000, but if you have $27,000, use all of it. Leave no money on the table, because there are big goals that we need to hit here. I think that's it. Also, again, I want to reiterate that I would love for sites to come and introduce their own SPSAs to us at some point. I would also love for these to continue to be public, be put in the public. I love what Ms. Potter and her team is doing. I would like to add, Mr. Trustee Gonzalez Hoi, addendum to their summary page, which I think would be great. And I think that, that's all my comments. I really want to make sure that we're putting money in elementary school, because, gosh, we really need it. Trustee Gonzalez Hoi?
Thank you Chair Smith Folds. I mean, I appreciate everything you said, and same with you, Mr. Raylio. The only thing that, that I would just as an idea for next year, I was trying to think, how do we bring 52 schools to present this, right? We'll never be done with these committees, right? So my suggestion would be that we just somehow organize maybe a day. I don't want to ask principals to come on a Saturday, but like a day, maybe during the week, where we can all come together and ask maybe also Mr. McGee and Ms. Rosino to be there as panelists, so that we can ask questions of all the sites, and all the sites line up and practically present for 30 minutes each one, right? And we go, and we go, and we ask questions. It'll probably be really exhausting, but I think it'll also be really exciting, right? Especially if we create a schedule where parents can also come and listen, and, and, you know, what else? I think that would be really, really great, a great way, so that's not just a compliance model, but that, so that they feel like they are present to community, and maybe that can also be a way for them to practice it with their SSCs or whatever. Just a quick idea. I mean, again, I don't want to just give principals more work to have to do. I mean, I, again, I don't want to just give principals more work to have to do, but ultimately this becomes the, the main document, which we know what's going on at the sites, right? So, uh, I think that it could be a really amazing thing, um, uh, for us to, to do something like that. Mr. Aurelio, sorry, sorry, Chair Smith Folds.
Well, and, and just building off that idea, which is, you know, it would be really wonderful to see sort of a data summit within the district where, where principals not only are speaking to their data and speaking, but that data we know is also really tightly connected to their site plans. Um, and it might not be all schools and one Saturday, maybe, or it, maybe it's a couple of evenings throughout the year or quarterly, we just divvy up the schools so you know, okay, this is my date. Here's where I'm going to present. And we have to get really tight on those presentations. Like you get 10 minutes, at 10 minutes, you're hitting your site plan, you're hearing your data, you're speaking to your action items and so forth. You're explaining what you're doing. As one of my teammates is texting me, maybe by school family. Yeah, so it could be by school families or something like that, right? But that we build this sort of, we're flexing that muscle. I think as site leaders, that's a muscle you have to really flex, which is we've done a lot of work with our instructional lead teams on around data and analyzing data. We have to do that also for our stakeholders and our parents and they're asking for it, right? They want to see us be able to flex that muscle and say, here are the items we're working on. Here's the data that shows progress or no progress and we need to change the items. Um, and the word that, uh, Gonzalez Hoi said, which, which was showcase. We do not do a great job showcasing our schools. But I, I can't remember the last time it was a showcase at one of our board meetings around the school specifically. Um, and it's a great way for us to promote our district, promote our schools and the work that they're doing um, and really build that energy. And it's not that way. We're not always stuck in the sort of negative view of things that are happening in West Contra Costa, really promoting the positive.
So let me just say a quick, quick story and it's super quick. Yesterday I went to Target and I typically wear all of my Hercules gear when I'm out. Like I just, I was on Hercules from top to bottom when I went out. And I had my, um, Hercules jacket that I got because I was parent volunteer of the year one year. So they have this little jacket that everybody wears and I had the jacket out. And this guy stopped me, he was like, whoa, Hercules has gear? I was like, yes, sir, we do. I was like, we, it's like, it's weird because you know, he says, he said, I see Pinot gear around, but I didn't see Hercules gear. And I was like, well, we're here, we have Hercules gear. And I was like, and I do have some Pinot gear because I'm your school board trustee. So I was like, I want to let you know that I rock both of them. But he was so happy and I was so happy because there's a sense of, there's a sense of acknowledgement and pride when you're walking around with these school logos on your, your back. And we want to instill that in kids and it's a culture shift that I'm proud to be at this school, you know? In spite of our struggles, we're making it through and we're doing the best we can. And there's a rallying behind that. So I love the idea of a showcase. I love the idea of, I mean, I want principals to come in there with all of their gear on and I want them, you know, I'm from the south. So when we tailgate, we tailgate. Like it's, you don't even have to go to the college to wear the colors and you paint half your face the color of the school and you have pom poms on. You are proud that that's your town college or that's your, your area's, uh, local college and local football or basketball team. That type of energy around a SBSA would just lift my heart up because it means that everybody's accountable to it. Everybody sees the area growth. Everybody is focusing on that area growth. The kids see it, the principals see it, the community see it, your, their parents who are volunteering on the SSC see it. Everybody is rallying around this school. This is our theory of action. This is how we are going to be a cougar or a star or a, a eagle or a titan or whatever it is or Spartan. This is who we are and we're going to hold on to that. And we're going to watch our principal via Zoom come and explain just how great we are and how much work we still have to do, but we can do it together as a team. And you know, I'm a big time sticker lady. So I'm like, I'm looking for the principal, who wants the award? Who wants the elementary award because you came in and you had balloons and your presentation was the best? Who wants a blue ribbon? So it's one of those things that I think that that's, I'm all for that. I think that's something we need to do and it's a culture shift in our school. So I like it. All right. Any further discussion on this item? But we're moving right along. We are rocking and rolling. All right, we are ready for a assessment update, please.
Okay, so we have Director Gabriel Chilcott and we have Director Allison Huey also here. Uh, Gabe, are you able to pull up the presentation or do you need me to do that? You got it. Okay, perfect. So I'm going to hand it over.
Let me just get to present to you real quick.
And I'm, I feel like I'm trustee Smith. Do we need a break for a quick second?
I can always take a break. So it is 11:11. It is 4:37, it is 4:37. Let's come back at 4:45, is that okay with everyone? Okay, we'll come back at 4:45 and then we will rock the assessment update. See you guys in a couple of minutes. Bye. My kids saw me get up from the computer and they came running. I was like, I want a break, no. I was like, no, it's just a break, don't ask me anything, I can't help with anything, no, 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 not yet, not yet.
Now, my door opens, my dogs come running. Are we going to go for a walk? Are you, are you done? Are we going to go for a walk?
It's literally looking at kids and giving them the Heisman like, no, 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 not, please, not yet. Just give me a minute. All right, it is four, it is 4:44, so we actually have one more minute. Mr. Chilcott, were you a history teacher by chance?
I was, I was a history teacher for nine years at Helms and a year at Richmond High.
Do you know how I know that? I think you told me at one point, but do you know what the Telltale giveaway is?
I'm going to guess it's the, uh, the, uh, the authentic classroom map.
Yes. It's the map in the background. I was like, oh, he's a history, history teacher for sure. I was, I think I remember you telling me at one point, but I was like, I, I'm pacing bets on this one. He was definitely a history teacher. All right, so it is 4:45. We are all back. No, we are on time. This is great. Let's go ahead and get started with our assessment update.
Okay, let me just get to the share. All right, so that should be up. So first of all, thank you, uh, trustee Smith Folds, trustee Gonzalez Hoi and Mr. Aurelio. Um, so I'm here to talk about an assessment, assessment update, um, for the latest, am I getting? Hold on, I'm having technical problems. There we go, we'll go with the, the left-hand button instead. Okay, so the topics. It's going to be an assessment update on, um, the English Language Proficiency Assessment of California LPAC. Also, this is the one where all of the acronyms is written out. So, um, if you get stuck on any of this, then it's in the, uh, it's in the presentation. So now you know what all these, uh, these acronyms for assessments stand for. Uh, the Sback or Smarter Balance Assessment Consortium. I'm going to talk about the California Alternative Assessment, CAA, and the Advanced Placement Test. Although actually, um, Dr. Huey, uh, from College and Career is going to speak to AP because she was the one that put together some of that information. Um, also, I, I want to say that, uh, Director Rosino was unable to be here tonight, but she also put together the, uh, information for LPAC. Um, we can go a little bit deeper on that if needed. And so really I'm talking about the winter local assessment window, um, but with some comparative information um, around some scores last year and scores this year and just how testing is going forward in the district. And then we'll, uh, end with some recommendations, um, of what we're thinking. So we're currently in the midst of LPAC Summit of Testing, um, testing K2. Or so they're sorry, the RAP Center, which is the, uh, folks that work for, uh, work with Christie um, in the EL department are testing K2 all domains. They're testing grades three through 12, speaking only domains. And the other domains would be, um, assessed by, uh, teachers. So there's a lot of marshalling of resources and people across the district right now to, uh, get all of our students, uh, tested on the LPAC. Um, and for secondary, the CD recommends to test up to 20 students at a time due to remote monitoring. And for elementary, the CD recommends to test up to 12 students at a time, um, due to remote monitoring. Those numbers that the CDE is recommending are the same for all, um, state testing. So for Sback, those recommendations would hold true as well for, uh, remote.
Can I add that third bullet under the, um, that's okay if you went forward. We did, uh, make some, so added some supports for the high English learner sites because we know that those sites were going to be affected more greater, uh, just the sheer numbers of students. So we did provide additional supports there for that.
Yep. Thank you, Mr. Aurelio. Um, so the RAP Center is, uh, currently testing all students for initial LPAC, both in-person and online. And the school sites will then receive that information in their, uh, EL data folders. Just to show you the enormity of the work, um, these, this is a chart of the, or a table of just the number of where they are in the process and the number of students that need to be tested for LPAC. So honestly, that one said, I don't know that I need to read.
And I, and can I just speak to the difference between the summative and initial? Because I'm not sure if everyone understands. The initial LPAC, we give that assessment whenever a student starts. So we typically, there's a fall window, the beginning of the year for all our new, mostly kindergarten age students, but new students to our district who are, uh, considered potentially English learners, right? So that based on the home language survey that a parent fills out when they enroll their student, um, a, a kid is tentatively assigned English learner status pending their assessment. And so this is the assessment, the initial LPAC. Now the issue, the window in the fall does extend beyond the fall because students join us throughout the year. So whenever we get a new student, um, even if it's mid-year, even if it's during the summative LPAC window, a student must have an initial. So you could be a new student to our district who maybe just got here from Guatemala or somewhere else and you're going to get two tests. You're going to get the initial and you're going to get the summative regardless of the time of, if you, if you join us sort of between February and May in that window. So there is a difference between these two assessments. But once you have the initial, you only take it once, once you're in the system, it's only the summative year after year.
Okay, thank you. Uh, so the California Assessment of Student Performance and Progress, um, the CAST. Um, and this is the one that often is the Smarter Balance or Sback is what we're calling is the biggest piece of that. Um, and it has two components. One is the computer adaptive, which is the CAT. So there are changes this year. Um, so I'm going to slow down just a bit to go through those changes just to make sure that, uh, we're, we're tracking on that. Currently the CAT portion, which is, it, it basically would, it's the most resembling of the, um, multiple choice, um, tests, um, although it is adaptive. It has been adjusted the blueprint to shorten the test by half. So it is adaptive, but they have adjusted that blueprint to make that only half as long as it would be for both ELA and math. The performance tasks, because it's built around one task and the, um, um, basically the task you have to do around to solve that particular, uh, problem or to answer that question, the test length is going to remain the same. So that is whether in-person or, um, remote, um, but right now we're planning for remote. Um, although I'll get to that in a second. And then the California Alternative Assessment, the CAA for ELA and math are for students that, uh, wouldn't be able to access the, uh, Sback test, um, so for students with a higher needs and that's in-person, uh, one-to-one testing only. Um, so that will continue that way and that's through the case managers. CD updates. So important motions from the California State Board of Education. So I want to say this, this is all in flux. So we're doing our best to capture where we are. But when this slide deck was made, um, a couple of changes have even happened since then. Um, and new information has come out. So we're trying to capture this, but just saying this is, it's difficult to give this update. We were waiting to give it at this particular meeting because there was going to be an update from the CD, from the California State Board of Education, but it even changed after that. So just, uh, owning that. So waiving the requirement around accountability percentage for a participation rate below 95%. Uh, meaning that the state is allowed to honor the fact that it's going to be difficult for us to capture 95%. meaning that the state is allowed to honor the fact that it's gonna be difficult for us to capture ninety-five percent right now just in terms of however we roll out those tests to going forward. They allowed an extension of the administration window for both CAST and LPAC to July thirtieth. That's one that is changed in that there's another offering, which I'll get to in the next one, cuz I'm gonna save that for the recommendations, just to speak to that a little bit. And then a general waiver of the California Science Test for twenty twenty twenty-one, so the science portion of the test being waived for this particular year, and really just focusing on the ELA and the math. So I left the strike-throughs in this because I wanted you to see sort of what we were planning for recommendations as they went through, and the fact that some of this is in flux. So elimination of CAST and Sbacke requirements would have been one of the recommendations that would have brought forward, and may now go down to bullet four that I didn't put in just cuz it'd already been submitted. And just in terms of the, the bandwidth of our system, the realities of remote learning and what our students and what our teachers are experiencing right now, we probably would have come forward with a recommendation that the CAST requirements be eliminated for this particular year until we are fully back in person and able to honor the amount of time and energy that teachers need to be spending, both in the instruction leading up to these summative assessments, but also just in the administration of those assessments. Another option would have been pushing Sbacke to fall, which was one of the options that was put out by the states at one point. But that was no longer there, and so that's why they were struck through. Then the third would have been a simplified Sbacke. So we were working as a team and trying to think about, okay, how could we make this less onerous for teachers and students? So again, this is both in relation to remote learning, but also just in the trauma that, that our families, our teachers, our students are experiencing during this time. And bringing anxiety and stress up around summative assessments, although we really want that data. As a system, we wanted to make sure that we were really focused on the emotional health of, of our communities. So now, since this was made, and we have not fully dug into this, so it's somewhat premature, but I want to make sure that the, it has come out that we can possibly put an assessment out in lieu of Sbacke, meaning that we can use one of our local assessments, which STAR, it looks like. I'm gonna put lots of qualifiers, it looks like, because I wanna make sure that I'm able to sit down with the team to be able to say things, or me to be able to discuss this before I'm putting anything out a hundred percent, but it looks like STAR could possibly be used in lieu of Sbacke grades two through eight in our system. So that could relieve some of that pressure. But again, as you can see by all the changes that are just in this week old presentation that I put together, really, things are up in the air. So I'll pause there. Mr. Aurelio, did you wanna speak to, to any of that?
Well, and I, I think that's a big one, that the state is allowing that flexibility of using our local measures. STAR being a standards-based assessment, it's computer adaptive, it's basically tailored uniquely to each student as they're taking it. One, our system already gives that assessment, so the lift on saying, okay, the next administration of STAR is, is something that we're all gonna focus on, that's much easier lift, I think, for our teachers, for our students. They're familiar with the assessment, it would be good. The challenge for us is going to be eleventh grade, because eleventh grade, we do not have STAR. We do not give STAR to eleventh graders. So we would have to make a determination, do we somehow figure out a way to have the eleventh grade students come in or figure out a way to do the Sbacke, the trimmed Sbacke that is being put out by the federal government? So that's definitely something we wanna look at for eleventh grade, because that, the aspect does matter. I think at any grade level, it matters, but eleventh grade, it can impact their access to certain college courses as well. So that data is used for some of that, so I think it's important to have that. That's it. That's all I wanted to add.
Yeah, thank you. And I think you hit on all of the, the requirements for the local assessment to be used. The one last one is it has to be communicated to parents. So that's one of the, the key things. But that is both built into the STAR system, and we already have some systems in place that would be able to, to work for that. And so now we're gonna transition to advanced placement, and I'm gonna ask Dr. Huey to hold those, and then I'll be back on in a few.
Thank you, Gabriel. Good evening, trustees and Mr. Aurelio. So we're really excited that advanced placement testing is going ahead this year. Last year, students in the midst of the pandemic took the AP exams digitally via a proprietary app that was downloadable on any Android device or any smartphone. So Apple phones were included, iPads, I believe, were not included. This year, AP has done away with the proprietary app, which is lovely, and students will be able to take all exams except for world languages remotely at home, just via their school-issued Chromebook. So that's wonderful. So all of the language assessments, though, will be tested in person. And the College Board has set three different testing windows that start in May, and the last window goes until early June. We are supporting sites to decide what the best timing is for their site in which to order, in which to offer those examinations in any of those three windows. Many sites are selecting window two or window three, honestly, simply to give students more time to have access to the curriculum before sitting for the exam. Really, really great news is that, you know, we have over two thousand students who are registered in AP courses throughout our district, which represent four thousand two hundred and sixty-one enrollments in advanced placement courses. Those four thousand two hundred and sixty-one enrollments are resulting in four thousand one hundred and thirty-eight exam registrations. So pretty much nearly every student who has enrolled in an AP exam is choosing to sit for an AP exam. We have very few students who are electing to not sit for any exams at all. Even better news is that we are offering, you know, twenty-five different exams, representing all of the different courses across our district that are being offered. And here you see all of the different courses that are offered by school site. And one of the really interesting data points that I'm happy to share with the committee this evening is that exam registrations for this year are extremely comparable to exam registrations last year. So we're not seeing a huge dip in the number of students who are sitting for exams due to distance learning or COVID. In fact, four out of our six comprehensive high schools have actually exceeded their exam registrations from last year, which is very heartening. And that's our, that's our AP update. Short and sweet.
I was having trouble finding mute. Like, I knew it was my turn, but I couldn't find the mute button. So, all right, I'm back. Okay, so I thank you, Dr. Huey. Now, we're gonna do a review of local assessments and specifically STAR. So, um, these are the numbers for the reading proficiency and the math proficiency. So as I go through this, I tried to keep reading on the left and math on the right, just to have some comparative data as we moved forward. So thirty-six point five percent of our students are scoring proficient on reading, and twenty-seven point five percent on math. You can see at the bottom that the reading represents going up point eight percentage points from last year's winter assessment, and the math down point five percent. Let me say that all the comparative data around math is not valid at all, just because we only started doing math system-wide this year. So those comparisons, anything from last year is not really gonna be valid. And we talked, I tell you, I don't remember which body we spoke to about the, the assessment. So the point eight up for reading is good. It tells us we didn't, you know, fall off a cliff, and that, that I can say it told us. But in comparing that data, it's hard to know because they were taken differently. One, it's a little over eighty percent of our students took the, the, the reading assessment in this winter assessment window. So that's low. So we're missing roughly ten percent of the students that would have, that are in the comparison from last year. So that could, that could affect it. We're giving the assessment at a distance, so that certainly could affect the outcomes as well. So I wanna make sure that we are speaking to those to some degree. This is the breakdown, and this is a change to the, this is the state benchmark. The state benchmark is a bit of a higher level than, than just the proficiency rates. So the state benchmark, you can see this is broken down by ethnicity, and it clearly highlights the opportunity gap within our system, highlights that we have different outcomes for different, the students in our, in our system, and that needs to be absolutely highlighted anytime that the, an assessment overview is being given. So I'll pause for a moment just cuz there is a fair amount of data on that one to, to let people kinda chew on it. And I, and I realize I'm moving pretty fast through some of these slides, but it is a big presentation. I wanna make sure to give time to some comments and to questions and answers, so. Here is the, the reading proficiency rate as compared fall/winter over two years. And I included this one just to show some of the movement. It is, as though you're looking through a microscope, really close at the graph. So the movement looks a little bit more pronounced in the way this is shown than it actually is. But I did wanna make sure that we were showing that this year for reading, we definitely are having a bit more of a fall over the year, or I guess I shouldn't say that cuz the fall assessment, a decline in the, in the scores as the, the year progresses. And again, I can't really tell you what, I don't know what to ascribe that to, but I did wanna make sure that we're speaking to that. I put this one in because I think it is really important, when we are rolling this data out, that we speak to that bottom block to that there are, there's a large number of students in our system that are, need to be on an urgent watch list, that we really need to take into account that there are some students that we really need to be focusing and bringing up on the STAR scores through instruction and through other mitigation. So that's why I put that one in there. This is the one I wanted to get to, because this is the first time that we could, that we were looking at this one. So this is a new set of data that we haven't quite looked at. And this is comparing the, the growth percentile breakdown. So the, this compares the fall-to-winter growth breakdown and in nineteen twenty, and the fall-to-winter growth breakdown in twenty and twenty-one. And then I'll show you math next. This is only reading. And to me, this one is deeply important because it's the clearest indication of some loss during this time. And in some ways, it's the, the cleanest data set that we've had to be able to say that. We all knew it. And in looking at the data sets, this one is the one where I think it's shown clearly. So I'm gonna walk through this a little bit. One, high growth, typical growth and low growth. What this does is it compares students across the nation that are taking STAR, so it's not just within our system, to determine what high growth, typical growth and low growth are gonna be. And so the cutoff is low growth is thirty-five percent proficient on the state benchmark or below, and high growth is sixty-five percent or above. So that's where that cutoff is. So what this says that is in fall-to-winter of nineteen twenty, thirty-four point seven percent of the students in our district were having high growth, which means it was higher than would be expected during that time. Twenty-eight point three percent were having typical growth, so these, you know, somewhat average or typical growth within that time, and thirty-seven percent were having low growth. So those would be kids that we really wanted to be focusing on as to why they weren't progressing at the, at sort of a typical growth level or what was happening with them. Fall-to-winter, you'll see that there's a change in these numbers, and I won't go through and read these. Instead, I'm gonna go to the comparative one over here, and oh, you'll notice the arrow I made on the top one is a little bit smaller than the other ones. Okay, note to self, always make the arrows the same size. Anyway, so high growth, they went down four point five percent. Typical growth went down five percent. Low growth went up nine point five percent. That's when you compare last year's data to this year's data. And I think that's indicative to the fact that we have a larger set of kids that are having low growth during this time, and that we are, we're going down a little bit. It's not a huge shift. So again, it tells us that there's great instruction happening out there that, that as a system, that students are not falling too far behind, but it does point out that it's less so, the growth is less than it is in previous years. So I wanna make sure that I'm honoring that. As is the first time I've rolled this one out, Mr. Aurelio, did you wanna speak to any of the?
No, and I just, this SGP or the growth metric is the metric we are, we used in writing our AMO for the use of STAR data. So when we took the STAR math, for example, to, as a contract, we switched over to this metric, that the growth metric as a way of measuring progress. And I think gave, summed it up really well. I think this is showing, I mean, I know people are throwing things, learning loss out there, and that sort of, those terminology, that terminology out there. This is that first bit, bit of data set that we can actually point to and say, well, okay, yes, there's been a loss here. There's, there's, the progress isn't being made the same way it has in the past, and this is clearly showing that with the reading scores. And trustee Smith Folds, I know that we're starting to get questions in the Q and A piece. I don't know if we typically use the Q and A, but I just noticed that, that there are some questions there. So at some point, if we wanna look at those and address those, we can.
I think that that would be great. Let's let Mr. Chilcot get through this presentation, and then definitely before trustee Gonzalez and I ask questions, let's do the Q and A questions. Is that okay, trustee Gonzalez-Hoy?
Yeah, or maybe we just wanna have Mr. Aurelio read them during the public comment, during the questions. And then that way, I just actually watched another board meeting of one of our colleagues, and they actually would read comments that came to them on the chat or on the, and then that way it just gets on the record that people made those questions.
You can do that.
I think that's perfect. Thank you so much, trustee Gonzalez-Hoy. It's on you.
Okay. Yeah, and I recognize this is a very dense presentation. There's a lot in here, so I'm sure there'll be some questions and some clarifications. So as I said, we can't do a comparison of this one because we didn't use STAR math as a system last year, but we can look at a comparison of this fall to this winter, which shows forty-six point three percent low growth. Obviously, we would want as large a percentage as possible of those into typical into high growth. We would like to see this obviously outweighed at the top rather than the bottom. Forty-six point three percent low growth is indicative of math, of us not moving in the way that we would like to with math. I think we can clearly say that that is what this data shows. So I put this in here because the, there wasn't, there just wasn't a space for me to be able to compare STAR reading in met, in Spanish and STAR math in Spanish throughout this. But I wanted to make sure that we were honoring that we do offer those to a number of students. And I put up the scores here, and although they both went down from the previous year, they're also both higher than the English Language STAR test. And I can't come to a full conclusion as to why that is, except to say that it does point to the fact that we need to continue offering STAR reading in Spanish and STAR math in Spanish, and getting as many of our kids that that would help them as possible taking those tests, so that the language barrier is not. So we're actually seeing the skills and the content knowledge rather than the language being a barrier for that. And just to tell you, cuz I did look at it, the Spanish was, oh, sorry, for reading, it was eight point five points higher. And for math, it was fifteen point one points higher than the, the comparable test in English. So again, I wanted to honor that that was there, although unable to go through and disaggregate it in quite the way that I did all the other ones. And so some system issues and improvements, I wanna say that the, this is two through eight. So K one data, the distance learning, it has been difficult for us to capture some of that data, and the participation has, has been a bit low across the system. So we need to look into that. And we made a conscious decision not to highlight the K one data quite as much at this point because we just didn't have something comparable to STAR. And we wanted to make sure that we were being responsive to the needs of the kids and the students. That being said, I think it's important to, to say that, that, that inefficiency does exist. That won't happen next year. We're rebuilding our, our K one systems and making our tracking systems around that, and so that'll be stronger. Two, grades two through eight through STAR. Two, uh, grades two to eight through star, the participation rates have continued to be, um, a bit of an issue. Eighty percent is not terrible, but it's not high enough. Um, and I would have liked to have seen that higher this, um, this, uh, this window. Using data to drive instruction, really socializing how we pivot from this data to how that's being used by teachers and schools and principals and how they're driving instruction. Um, there's definitely some work that we need to do around that. Using data to understand incoming students, um, say how we capture the sixth grade data and socialize that or, or, um, socialize, socialize the adult learning around how we're going to, how, sorry, I lost my own thought in there. One, how you would use that in middle schools for those incoming seventh graders, right? And how across the system, we are having principals come together to chew on how they would utilize that data to know where kids are when they come into that. And the same would, um, be true in high schools. And then in high school, reading inventory is the reading assessment that we have for ninth and 10th graders. In that one, uh, the participation rates are low. And again, sort of the same issues. We don't really use that to drive instruction, um, systemically across our organization. And so there was some room for, uh, for growth in there that we need to do. And I would say that overall, looking at our assessment, uh, protocols and systems to create greater coherence TK through twelve. And especially in, in how we view, um, ELA and math, um, assessments across our system. That's some work that we're, we're digging into right now and we continue to expect to be driving forward. And the recommendations, I think I may have covered some of this, but K one again, to comport more completely implement the existing system because the existence, existing system is good. It's just been difficult to roll out during this time. And so we need to continue to work on that. To a, uh, grades two to eight star, um, I think we should continue purchasing star reading and math. We also should continue purchasing the schoolzilla add-on, which allows us to dig into our data. But we need to train our adults across the system on schoolzilla and how to use data to drive instruction. It's really to, to again, be getting educators together to one, train on how to use these systems, but to get them also talking to each other about, um, best practices that we can, uh, capture that innovation in the, and spread it across our system. And then high school, I touched on this, is reviewing the TK twelve literacy and math assessment systems across our organization. Is one of the things that we're going to get to continue working on. I'll pause there. Uh, Mr. Raylo, did you have anything with the recommendation that you wanted to add on before I, uh, I close out?
No, I think, um, just going back to S back and the CAS requirements, which is, given the changes that are happening, we are going, if allowed, we're going to use the star data as our local measure for grades three through eight, which is the testing grades for CAS. That would be our recommendation. We will have to decide on grade eleven specifically how we want to handle grade eleven. At this point, I'm leaning towards an S back administration for grade eleven. Obviously there is a lot up in the air around spring reopening and everything else. So, you know, that's going to impact the approach we take, but that would be our recommendation at this point, if, as long as we're allowed to use the star data or star assessment. I, I think we should put less stress on our system and then, um, focus on your, our attention on the eleventh graders and how we make that palpable.
Thank you.
Thank you so very much, trustee Gonzalez Hoy. What did you, what was your recommendation for the Q and A?
Oh, it was that, uh, we read the Q and A questions and comments during the public comment piece.
I can, I can do that. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you. I think that's what I heard you say, but I was not too sure. Okay. That'll work. So let's go to, thank you so much, Mr. Chilcot and Ms., um, Huey. Trustee Gonzalez Hoy, questions?
Thank you, Chair Smith Folds. I only have a few. Um, the, uh, thank you, Mr. Chilcot and, um, Ms. Huey, Mr. Aurelio for that. Um, it was a lot. So I'm trying to process it. Uh, I have a lot of comments, but my questions are, um, the CAA test. I forgot what you called it.
California alternative assessment.
Thank you. Um, how many students take that test?
You know, I know I got a text from Kristen Hardy that she had to hop off. She was on this, but it's percentage wise, not a great percentage, but it's our most severe, uh, students in special education who essentially just can't access the other assessment. And that's why they created the CAA. We do know that it was going to have to be an in-person assessment, just because the teachers, how the student responds, a lot of times it's non-verbal. There's just a variety of ways that students respond to those assessments. So the teacher really has to know the child to, to take that assessment. And Gabriel Chocada, did we, do we know if the local assessment thing impacts the CAA? Cause I wasn't sure if that connection is made with the CAA.
I don't know. So I don't want to posit an answer. A star would not work for the students that are taking the CAA. I think I can say that, but I wouldn't want to speak to how we would overcome that until we've actually fleshed it out.
So we probably would need some guidance from, see what the guidance is from the state on the CAA. The S pack's a cleaner one. We know that we can swap out the star, but for CAA, we might have to either find a way to still do the CAA or if somehow they allow for an alternative that's local, locally based.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, and Ms. Warfield just reminded me on the Q and A that it's Dr. Huey, not Ms. Huey. So I apologize, Dr. Huey, for saying your title wrong. I really do apologize for that. Um, so, the simplified S back, um, I know that like when, when we were in person, it takes quite a long time. So since it's half what it, what it is, what it used to be and it's online, uh, Mr. Shilcot, would you know more or less how long they, it would take?
Oh, I just looked this up too. Um, it would be, so the cat would be one block of roughly an hour. And the performance task would take, I believe they want you to give less than two hours, but somewhere in there. And it also is different by grade. So I'm giving you a rough estimation. I can look it up too, and I'll make sure that I get that to you.
And if I can add, all those assessments historically have been untimed. Kids can take as long as they need. Um, so that is a factor to remember.
Recommended times, yeah.
Those are recommended times, but they're actually technically untimed tests and kids can take all day. And some kids would, I, I've, I've been in situations where I've had kids take one question a day, like, it's, you know, it can be painful to, to stretch it out that way.
Yeah. Um, in the recommendation, uh, you mentioned obviously eleventh grade. You mentioned star for second through eighth. Uh, so what about, I got confused. What about ninth, 10th and 12th?
So ninth and 10th do not take S back.
Okay.
And 12th not as well, because the state's eliminating the science component. We don't have to worry about, I think 12th grade sometimes took the science. I don't remember which grade we gave it at, but only the eleventh graders would need to take the ELA and math components of the S back.
Got it. Okay. Thank you for that. Uh, Dr. Huey, um, my understanding is that we used to, please correct me if I'm wrong on this, uh, we used to pay for this, the cost of AP tests for students who are in free and reduced lunch. And I heard a rumor, and this is what I'm asking you there, that we're not paying for them this year. Is that true? And if so, would you mind talking about the reasoning? Is it because of the cuts?
Sure. So that's not entirely accurate.
Thank you.
So, yeah. So this year we did shift to a cost sharing model after, after several years where the district did pick up the cost of all AP tests for all students. So that part is accurate. Due to the cuts, we did shift to a cost sharing model. Um, and the new model is that, um, all students get to take one exam totally free. And any student who is on free and reduced lunch qualifies for all of their exams to be paid for by the district. So students who, who qualify for free and reduce still get all of their exams paid for, um, by the district for free. Families who are not qualified for free and reduced lunch, we are asking that they share the cost of all exams beyond that first exam.
Got it. Okay. Thank you very much for clarifying that. I appreciate that. Um, let me see if I have one in, oh, yes. My last question, uh, Mr. Shilcot is, um, schoolzilla. What's been the response from administrators and teachers on the program?
So that's why I called it an inefficiency. Um, the program itself has a lot of strengths. I don't think we did a great job in rolling out, uh, the professional development to increase, um, adult learning with that. Um, and there's a number of reasons, you know, for that, but I would say I can't track how good the responses were. Because it just hasn't been socialized well enough at this point. And that's why I really, you know, you know, recommend we do a better job with that and give it another year to really see if that could drive, um, some work for the principals and sites.
Got it. Okay. Thank you very much. Uh, Chair Smith folds. That was my last question.
Thank you so much, trustee Gonzalez Hoy. I just wanted to ask, when you say computer, the, the test is adaptive. You mean that it goes with like, say, if you got a question right, then it gets harder. If you get a question wrong, it goes down. It's, I just want to make sure that everybody knows what adaptive means when you're talking about that. The, you said that all AP exams are going to be done remotely, except for the language assessment exam. The language assessment exam has to be done in person. Can you tell me a little bit about the sites are going to set that up? Is your office going to set that up? Who sets that up and what is that going to look like?
Yeah. So every site, um, is creating their own site-based testing plan. So that plan includes both the date, um, on which the test will be administered because the AP or college board did, does allow for the exams to be given within one of those three preset windows. Each exam has a specific day and time on which it must be administered. So there's basically three dates that they can choose for each one of these twenty-five different exams that we're offering this year. The site will choose, um, which date works best for them. And they are communicating that within their own school site to the students who are registered for each of those examinations.
Okay. And then that's gonna, we're going to take into consideration all safety, all things that have to come under that. We are going to be very, very diligent and careful with that. I have to say with the, with our reading proficiency and our math proficiency, you know, we all know it to be true, but then when you see it in numbers, it's jarring at how much work we have to do and what we really need to always have a, our foot on the gas in closing these disparities and these gaps that are right there. Like we need to make sure that we have some clear, a clear roadmap to what we're doing, like a clear way of moving from step A to step B to step C when it comes to our children who are not hitting proficiency. And some of them are not even close to hitting proficiency and this, and they're going further and further in the system, not getting closer and closer to the mark. Um, I want us just to, you know, I think it's one of those things that we have to keep that in the forefront of all of our planning. We have to keep that in the forefront of all our decision makings. And we have to keep that in the forefront of, we just, we can't sleep on this. We have to keep pushing and stay awake and stay very diligent in the fact that this is, is unacceptable where we are with our kids and their, uh, proficiency. This state doesn't make you take a exit exam. Is that true?
That no longer exists for the state. It used to, but not any, it's no longer in play.
Okay. Cause in Alabama, it was the stress of the eleventh and twelfth grade year. You had to take your exit exam to be able to pass and get your diploma. Okay. So that no longer exists in here. All right. I just wanted to ask that question. I have to say that this is a lot of information and I think I'm with trustee Gonzalez Hoy here. I'm processing everything that I saw, but it is a well-put-together presentation. Thank you for that. But it's a lot. It's a lot. And we have a huge district and we really have so much work to do to get our children where they need to be. And I just don't really know where to start. If I could be completely vulnerable and honest with you all in this subcommittee, I don't know where to start. I mean, I see the test scores and I see the SPSAs and I see the lack of funding and resources and all of that. And I just don't know. I just don't know where to start. I mean, I know we have to start because that's, what do they say? The longest journey is like the first step or whatever, but I know we have to start. I just don't know where to start. So I'm open to hearing all suggestions and comments. Okay. Trustee Gonzalez Hoy, any more questions?
No questions. Thank you. Just comments.
Okay. So let, oh, you're right. Which I made my comments right here. It was a hot mess. Let's go to, do we have any public comment?
So I'm going to take this opportunity to read out the Q and A that's popped up. But then I, that'll give people an opportunity to raise their hands, I guess, if we want to do it that way.
I think that would be perfect. I'm going to bend down and pick up these paper clips that I dropped again, but I'll go here. Go ahead.
So TJ Warfield asked, um, why isn't the, the Latinx community called out as a needed additional assistance? If they are testing at the bottom of the groups, even worse than the black student community? I think that's a reference to the star data that showed for reading the Latinx, uh, students or below the African-American students on that indicator. So let a hunter asks, do you have the data disaggregated by ethnic group or did I miss it? I think also specifically speaking towards that data, I don't think all the data was disaggregated. Just a few of those slides were disaggregated. TJ Warfield asks, or spoke that the star dashboards are so very helpful. It makes it easy to do side-by-side comparisons of the grades as a whole of the spring, fall and year to year with great color coding to easily see who is meeting goals, struggling and at risk. Very happy with having data that is actually usable for action. So let a hunter asks, can we do site-based assessments due to the change in standardized testing requirement this year? And I think we addressed that in, in the presentation as well. Yes, Dr. Huey, not Huey, not Ms. Huey, Dr. Huey. And last one was to let a hunter, why are we repeating S back testing when all indicators show the most, that most students will perform even worse than they have in the past? And I think that's the question we've been, we, around our recommendation was that for eleventh graders, because that's the grade, we don't have a local assessment to use instead of this, the S back. We would be looking at the S back for the eleventh graders. That is all the Q and A. Um, I don't know. I don't see any other hands raised for public comment.
So I don't see any public comment either. Let's go to board discussion, trustee Gonzalez Hoy.
Thank you, uh, Chair Smith Folds. You know, I just wanted to, again, I want to thank all of you for the presentation and everything you're doing, especially right now. I, I want to echo what trustee Smith Folds said. I mean, every time I look at the data, which is so important that we constantly look at this data to remind us, obviously what keeps us up at night. I just, it's hard not to cry when you see that fifteen point eight percent of Latinx students are, you know, not performing to the math level that they should, right? Or black students at sixteen point three, or our Latinx students not reading at grade level, right? Only twenty-three point six percent do, and our black students at twenty-nine percent. And I think tying it back to the SPSAs and my comment about why it's so critical that goal one is the most developed and the most critical in my opinion, uh, is so important, right? And I hadn't made that connection until Mr. Shilcot made for this presentation, right? And, and it totally made me want to more urgently say, we got to train all of our staff on how to develop those goals and, and tie it to the needs, right? And, and, and let's not say that that's not happening. Cause I think that, that those conversations are happening on a daily basis, right? But at our sites, but it's just, we're just so behind and, and we just, we have to do better. And I'm preaching to the choir, but I mean, it's just, it's so hard to think that this is happening while we're all in this, doing these jobs, right? And I just hope that we continue to see progress. I think that even worse, when I saw the, 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 the slide about our Spanish speakers, uh, a star and seeing that, uh, fourteen point five percent loss in math this year. Oh my gosh. I mean, one single year that we've almost lost fifteen percent. Anyways, I, I, I know I can probably ramble on this more and more. It's just disheartening to see those numbers. I do agree with Mr. Shilcot. I, I would love to see more training on how to use data and the programs that currently exist. I know we've had so many and with the cuts, we cut the ones that educators were used to, right? So we have to constantly, you know, do more and offer more training. Um, so yeah, I would of course support that. You know, the recommendation about the assessments, uh, I'm, I'm fully in support of, of, of moving that forward with the agreement of our chair to the full board to use star as the indicator for second through eighth. Because I agree. I mean, I think that, that state testing, state tests are never a good indicator of where students are. I think that, you know, students seeing I think that, you know, students seeing them once a year and how difficult they are and, and completely different than the way that they are used to doing tests. It's just not a good indication of where a kid is. Uh, so that's why I'm always in agreement of using in-house tests for really showing where students are. Uh, so I'm in totally agreement of that. And if you all think that the best recommendation for 11th grade is to use the, the S back as a simplified assessment, I think it's totally okay. Mike, I forgot to ask this a question, and if Chair Smith Folds allows me to ask one more question now. What about, is there a way that we can have 10th graders take a training test? Do they offer that at any, like, at all? Because I want to make sure that we are giving that, that students are not coming in for the first time to take these tests, uh, that they've seen them before. Because I think that's where my students, when I was a teacher, it was the first time that we did the S back. And I remember my kids struggling so much on the first time when they were seeing it for the first time, like having to sit there for hours in the computer and like having to figure out how to do it. I saw a horrible indication where my kids were. I knew that that was not their level simply because it was their first time taking it. So, so is there a way that we could offer it for 10th grade just so that they get used to it? Or is that just not something we could do uh for, for next year?
I think we can definitely do training system test practice. The IABs technically are practice. Practice to the S back. It's the same system and the same essentially IABs are made up of former S back questions, right? They retire the questions, they become the IAB, and so they are getting that practice in there. I'm actually sent Mr. Chilcott a text real quick cuz it's, I know that STAR reading and STAR math does have through high school. We don't own that piece of it. We don't use STAR reading as STAR math in high school. I'd be really curious to know if, if connecting with STAR with Renaissance, I wonder if any districts in California are utilizing that for high school? And if it's made a difference for them, and I'd be really curious, just something to look into. And potentially as an option even for this year, if we want to look at that instead of S back. Cuz all they really have to do is turn on the button and they turn it on, right? It's really, it's not a system that takes that long to activate, so we can do our research on that.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you. I appreciate it. Um, I think that's my last comment.
Thank you, trustee Gonzalez Hoi. Um, Mr. Aurelio, what does IAB stand for?
Those are the interim assessment blocks.
Okay.
So that's a, within the S, the S back system or the CASP system. The state developed these sort of interim assessments. One is a, in the ICA, which is the interim complete assessment, which is essentially a full S back.
Right.
But that's practice, and then the blocks, which are specific standards or domains to test. And we do the IABs uh for mathematics typically, or we have in the past at least. So students do get that practice.
Okay, I think that I'm a, um, you know, when Costco has their workbooks out, their bridging books, and then there's that, like, I have like a closet full of those. Buy them at every grade level. Don't know why kids have already passed through that grade level at my house, but I'm like, these are great. So when they have them at Target, the little dollar workbooks, I buy like a thousand of those, like when my youngest was in kindergarten, she literally did like nine phonics books. And I was like, oh, go ahead, do another one cuz you know, they're quick, they're easy. So I would like us to expose our children to more example problems than not. Because I think a lot of test-taking is strategy. If you saw how a test was made and you saw how the, the questions are asked and you see how one may build on another, if you have that, then it gives them more exposure than not, you know? And that's one of the things that I don't think that we do well is we don't give kids that may not have the, uh, what were those called when we were a kid? The crib notes or whatever? You wouldn't have to read the whole book. You would just get that yellow and black book and you would be able to look at it. We don't provide our students with enough of that. I think that's a lot of strategy. We need to have test-taking strategies and teach them the strategies. The thing that I want to talk about is your AP enrollment. So we're working with EOS equal opportunity schools in the district, and I would love to see that slide disaggregated. I would love to see how many in, uh, by ethnicities. How many EOS students are African-American? How many EOS students are Asian-American? How many EOS students are Caucasian-American? How many EOS students are Latinx? Because I think that we're a big district. You know, it's great that we have 4,000 and something students taking it, but that's a low number compared to 29,000 students that we have in the district. So I really want us to make sure that we're looking through an equity lens. For me, if we had 29,000 students, I, I, and let's say 13,000 are in high school, then I would want 13,000 taking an AP class. Do you see what I mean? Like, I want us to push this system to where our kids know that advanced placement means them. It, we're talking about you. You can be an advanced placement student. You have the opportunity. You have the ability, and we want to make a space for you in advanced placement. Advanced placement is not just for this student. Advanced placement is for all students, and we need to get there in our system and get there quickly. And that may mean removing the barriers for what allows you to come into advanced placement. It may mean, and I can say all this because I've been working with EOS, but it may mean taking the, the labels off of advanced placement. It means taking the barriers around advanced placement off. It means having ways to where you can self-identify as advanced placement. You don't have to have a counselor tell you you can go in advanced placement. You can say, I want to go into advanced placement. Does that make sense? So I want us to really look at that slide and go deeper into advanced placement in our district. Along with what trustee Gonzalez Hoi said, we have to, we have to get down into some deliverables with our students who are not succeeding. We have to get drilled down and figure out why. And then instead of just saying they're not succeeding, we have to figure out what actionable steps we're gonna take to make that no longer be the case. It's gonna require some hard conversations. It's gonna require us really saying, this group needs help. What are we going to do to focus on this group to make sure that they are at? We're giving them the opportunities and we're putting in the support and we're putting in the resources and we're putting in, we're changing the system to where we are recognizing, not only recognizing, but we're putting action behind our recognition, which means money, which means resources, which means people, which means intentionality about how do we make sure that this group is elevated? And we, we know that that has to deal, it's layered. We know that that deals with cultural pedagogy. We know that that deals with who are the people in front of them teaching them. We know what that deals with. What supports do they have at home? What can we do as a, as a school system to make sure that we are providing all that we need to provide for these students? So it's going to be some tough conversations, but I know I'm not gonna speak for trustee Gonzalez Hoi, but I am. I know that him and I are dedicated to making movement in this area for our students. Um, first of all, I think it's fantastic. Look at the time, 5:40, just saying. So it is 5:40. We have, oh, look, there's public comment. Well, I say trustee Gonzalez Hoi, we just go to public comment. What do you think? We can go a little bit out of the, the area.
Sure. So I can take so let a hunter right now?
I, yes, of course you can. Let's go ahead and take that public comment, and after public comment, we will move to uh three. Item three, very quickly. Go ahead, please. Thank you.
Hello, how is everybody doing? Um, I'm glad to be at this meeting. Um, missed it before. So trustee Smith Folds, you said it. Trustee Gonzalez, you said it. Sorry about my dogs barking. The culturally relevant pedagogy, all those things, we need to find out why our kids are not making it with these exams. First of all, we already know basically why standardized testing was created out of eugenics. So how do you expect for students to be able to champion a test that was created to push them out of the way? So, um, I think that takes some bearing. I know it's, I know it's a state thing, but still, and also, um, hi, Dr. Huey, uh, you're bringing, you're saying you're doing, they're doing half of the content or half of the S back. That's for 11th graders that are 11th graders this year?
Right, so the, the piece that's the computer adaptive, that portion of the test has sort of been cut in half. Half the length of the traditional test that they've given, but the performance task is still the same. So there's four parts. There's the ELA computer adaptive, the ELA performance task, math computer adaptive, and math performance task.
Okay, so 11th graders will be doing that this year. I ask that cuz I have an 11th grader. Okay, um, and then my concern with that is twofold as a parent and as a teacher. I was there when they brought that IAB out and the S back. And as, um, he must have been there too cuz trustee Gonzalez, that was the worst experience my students ever had. It was formatted incorrectly. The questions didn't go to the right thing. When you clicked it, it was awful. And so when I look at the data, I know that, um, students are performing at a very low rate. However, some of that is partly with that test. It's awful. So my question, as I asked before, was if we know that our students are not doing well, why are we still doing this test this year? Maybe we could, and you said it was in the presentation. I don't know. I wanted to get something to eat right quick, but the site-based assessments that help our students. And then my son also hasn't done an IAB, but now we're talking about S back. So I'm really concerned about that. Having seen the way my students perform, my district has performed. Seeing and then thinking about my son and all the preparation he hasn't got. And I love teachers, but teachers are doing a lot of asynchronous work. I'm just dropping it out there, a lot of it. So, um, I'm really concerned about this, and I really think that I know we can do it, put our heads together and find some way like they did. Um, I forgot that school in San Francisco, they created site-based assessments that spoke to the ability to, that spoke to their students, not just their ability, but spoke to their students. So like investing in that kind of stuff because this is a lot. I mean, it's, we had a very terrible year and now we're giving kids S back. Same answers to new questions. So I'm, for me, that's just not, that's not working. Thank you for allowing me to have.
Thank you, Ms. Hunter.
Thank you so much. Mr. Aurelio, to Ms. Hunter's point, let's just make sure that the, the quicker we can get this information out to parents and say, this is what's coming. This is, you know, this is what practice tests look like. This is what practice questions look like. As soon as, as quick as we can kind of ask our administrators, you know, roll this out to your teachers. Make sure that they're putting this, this information in front of students and knowing that it's important. You know, we want you to do your best. We want you to look at these questions. If teachers can incorporate that in their, their lesson plans, whatever we can do to make sure that we're preparing students for this test, all students, the STAR test and all of it. Yes, sir.
I do want to remind the community and our families, and I'm gonna say this in a very sort of politically sounding way.
Oh, let me say it. Let me say it. Is this what, is this about that you can opt out? Okay, so, uh, community, I thought I knew where you were going. Community, you have the ability to opt out of any test, any, any test. You send a letter, you send a letter to your admin, correct? You sent a letter to your admin saying that you are the parent of child A, student number blah, 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 and you are wanting to opt out of state testing, and you have that right as a parent, and there's no penalties to your child for that. Is that correct? Is that accurate, everyone?
I didn't say it. You said.
No, I love to say it. You have the right. You have the right to opt out. That's your child. You have the right to opt out. So just again, to do that, you send a letter to your principal, to your admin with your child's name. Uh, child, children in middle school and high school have student numbers that are attached to that to make sure that they are aware that you are choosing not to take that test. Um.
So there's a, can I just answer a quick question? The question says, does this include LPAC? And LPAC is not included in that. LPAC is not one of those tests that you can opt out that way. Just want to clear that up. It just says we're talking specifically around the S back and those assessments.
Thank you for that. Yes. Um, I don't want to get in trouble saying you knocked out at everything, some things you have to take. We are on, so our action item, um, SPSA school plan for student achievement. I don't think we have any action around this item. Am I wrong? Or are we still continuing to go through it? We're still gonna go through those, and then we're gonna bring them back to the board in April. Is that true?
I guess the recommendation I would make is that we do push to get it agendized for a board meeting because I, I think they're as ready as going to be. Obviously, we're doing our review, but I, I think they need to get agendized so that we can put them to bed to really focus on the next round of SPSAs.
Okay, trustee Gonzalez Hoi, are you in agreement with that?
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Okay, do we have any questions around that action item?
Is there anything that we would have to attach of our review?
No, I, I think that the, the review we use was really for our discussion purposes. I don't necessarily know if that would be something we would publicize. We, we would present, I'm assuming it'd be an action item for the board to accept the SPSAs.
Okay.
Thank you, Chair Smith Folds.
No worries. Any, and I don't have any questions around that. Any public comment around this action item? There is one hand.
We do have a hand. Okay, so TJ Warfield, you can unmute.
Yeah, I just had a quick question cuz all three of you had some of those plans that were kind of like, uh, bare minimum D. Is there any sending those back to the schools and be like, can you beat this up a little bit and make it worthwhile before going back to the board?
Thank you for that question. Dr. Aurelio?
Well, my doctor again.
Good lord, Mr. Aurelio.
Yeah, we could definitely get feedback back to the sites. Uh, the challenge obviously is timing. Okay, I mean, I think there are living, breathing documents and they should be reviewing those with their site councils on a regular basis and sort of coming back to them. Where we at, we are at in the school year, the challenges, the focus is really shifting to next year's plans. They're in the cycle where now they're, they, this has been put to bed so we can really focus on, okay, we have the allocations, we know what our budget's gonna look like, site budgets for next year. We should be developing our plan so that when we get into May and June, we have a draft, fully drafted version of next year's site plan that the SSC is voting on. That way they can get to the board as soon as possible, so there's no hesitation on the site level of getting into next year and, and getting ready to spend their site dollars and get, put things into act, into action. So I hesitate on, at this point, having to make significant changes to their plans because they're really moving into the next cycle.
I think that, and trustee Gonzalez Hoi, you are up right after this. I think one of the things that we can do is give them a little bit of, listen. We saw this and this, you know, this is not gonna fly next year. I'm gonna need you to do better, do better. And, and we can get very clear with what our expectations are, even with, I'm real big about showing example. This is good. Does yours look like this? Make it look like this. You know what I mean? Like, work towards that end. And I think that that's something that we could do because we do want to have a standard. We want to have a standard for our SPSAs, especially when we're going into next year because it's, you know, it's a reset. Let's, everything's gonna be different. There's a reset. Let's kind of, what do they say? Go back better, build back better. We want to make sure that we are putting that standard on it. So I do think that there's ways that we can tighten up our SPSAs, and one way is through transparency with them and be like, you know, you don't have to, you don't have to go back and fix this one. Take your, take your C minus. However, this is unacceptable and it will be kicked back to you next year because we want you to do better. And, and we're publicizing these, and this is a point of transparency that we're making sure our, our families have, and we want you to be the best version of yourself because everybody's gonna see it, and you don't want to be compared to the school down the hill and you are a mess. So get it together. So yeah, I agree. Trustee Gonzalez Hoi?
I think that you said it really well, trustee Smith Folds. That's exactly what I was gonna say. I mean, I think that if they just know that moving forward, it's not just a compliance document, but they are gonna have to come into a presentation about it and that we're actually reading them probably for the first time in a long time. Maybe they'll, you know, they'll, uh, they'll do it a little differently. I, I agree. I mean, I don't want them to spend too much time on this year's. They're already overwhelmed to this, but like, I really like the suggestion of like, the sites that, you know, were below a C, especially, like, we send them a little, not, not we, the board members, but maybe you, Mr. Aurelio, send them a little message of like, let's say, just so you know, you know, we noticed deficiencies here. And we just want you to know that we're starting to really look at these, right? And, and maybe at a principal's meeting, Mr. Aurelio, you could lift like an example of an elementary, middle and high school to show, look at like this great example. And our board members wanted to make sure we just recognized, uh, some of the best SPSAs to set the standard. Maybe something like that to, to also think and recognize the ones that, that did put. Maybe something like that to, to also think and recognize the ones that, that they put a lot. I mean, I know they all put a lot of work because hey, these are like 80 pages each. Totally good. Probably took them a lot of time, but just, just the level of.
Well, it's good. It's good to have some exemplars, um, just like we, you know, as good teaching is, right? You have rubrics and you have exemplars and you can really point to that.
Trustee Gonzalez hoy, you are a very, uh, kind person. I was like, some people should get a smiley face stamp and some people should get a frowny face stamp and then you should throw it up on the screen. But you, I like your idea a lot better. I think that that would, that would actually be encouraging. So I think that, uh, Mr. Aurelio, the direction is to just make sure that they are encouraged to, uh, hit and to excel and be encouraged to hit that standard that we have set here at this committee. And to make sure that they have examples and know that it can be done. So, because some of their colleagues have done that. And if they need help or resources around that, that the district is available to help them with that, to make sure that they all hit that very high standard that we are setting for our schools. And to let them know that get ready, it's time to present. You're going to be called on to present it. Um, great. So we are on number four. And we are academic, uh, committee next meeting day is April 21st. This is going to be a special meeting. Our regular meeting will be on April 26th. We have a May 24th and we have a June 28th. Our special meeting on April 21st is going to be about our dual, dual language immersion and our council of elders proposal. And we are specifically talking about in the dual language immersion program. We're talking about the black student experience inside that dual language immersion program. And we have the council of elders, council of elders, um, is, uh, council of elders are members of our black community leadership that are, uh, that play an important role in AIPAC and ASAT. They pay a point one of AIPAC and our ASAT. April 26th, we're going to do our summer school update and our special education extended school year update. May 24th is our new school programs, the VAP or the virtual academies, um, the Afrocentric School and Ethnic Studies. I did have a meeting on Friday, um, a talk with a trustee. And one of the attendees said, please make sure you talk about elementary school, black studies and elementary schools also. What would that look like when you're doing your ethnic studies conversation? And then June 28th, uh, is our race and equity update. Please know that this is your committee. So if you have things that you want put on the agenda, please send them to trustee Gonzalez hoy or I. Mr. Aurelio, uh, would also be able to take those. And we have our agenda setting meetings and we can put those on the agenda. We, we don't have a lot of time, but we are, you know, honey, this boy, we good for a special meeting. We'll, we'll, we'll set up a special meeting in a heartbeat. Um, I think that that is all trustee Gonzalez hoy. Do you have anything else to add?
Well, thank you to you for a great meeting and running it and Mr. Aurelio and his staff and Ms. Rueen Bark as well for always taking great notes in our translator as well. Thank you, everyone.
That's awesome. Mr. Aurelio, anything to add?
No, thank you, everyone. I'm glad everyone was able to stick with us. Hey, we're two for two in the last two meetings. We've ended on time. This is great. Let's keep it up.
I think it's wonderful. I just must say that I am one to give praise. I think that we are the Avengers. I think the other subcommittees are more DC Justice League. But I think that we are knocking it out of the park. So thank you very much, everyone. We appreciate you coming. No shade to DC, but you know, um, thank you for coming. We appreciate it. And we will see you at the next academic subcommittee, our special meeting on April 21st. Have a great night, everyone. We are adjourned at, oh, sorry, my text just went off. We are adjourned at 5:56. Bye, everyone. Thank you. Bye.